Fellow role?
Hoffman.
Here.
Law.
Here.
Krakenburg.
Swallow.
Here.
Bowman.
Parsons.
Here.
Ferris.
Here.
Adair.
Here.
Item four is discussion and action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda and will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, 21 April 2025. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting, 3 May 2025. Item C, approval of claims in the amount of $253,602.3 and payroll expenses of $234,788.96. And item D, approval of ASAP energy invoice in the amount of $30,880.33. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Hoffman and a second by Dr. Law to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Law?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. There was no planning commission meeting. Mr. Bowman's not here to give the hospital authority meeting report. Library board meeting, Mrs. Swallow.
Hey, we, they are planning on doing remodeling for the shared room in the children's library, so they're working on that, preparing for the summer reading program. And they're removing old outdated books, especially historical ones, and updating with new materials.
All right. Any questions for Mrs. Swallow? Thank you. Item D, the arena authority special meeting, you have the minutes from that meeting in your packet. Any questions regarding that? Item E is tourism tax commission meeting. Was not, we did not have a meeting, or the last meeting was reported in the month of April. Item F is the board of adjustments meeting on April 23, 2025. Is that that? Mm-hmm. Mr. Adair.
Did we have a meeting?
We don't know, we're on board of adjustments.
I don't think so.
Month planning commission.
Okay.
Okay. That's why.
Do you have a study?
Yeah, so we had one applicant crossing our barriers, where it's based on his zoning. Wanted to build a shed to store his boat in. But by building the shed, he had too much lockup, so we granted the barriers.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Ford? All right. Item G is the airport commission meeting on May 12th. I was unable to attend that, I think you were unable to attend that. We'll pick that up next time.
Was it just all business as usual? Or anything crazy on there?
All right. Item H is the parks and recreation committee meeting on May 14th. Mrs. Swallow.
We discussed and approved the pool hours, admission, general rules, and equipment rules for the pool. We, I think that she's doing the lifeguard hiring, or interviewing this week anyway. We need to finish some cement work, some chip and seal in the parking lot, and a little bit of painting in the building, and then it should be just about finished. Then they will still need to do inspections prior to opening the pool, which we hope may be in June. We approved a master plan for half the park, so we can begin working on grants for the park.
And I'll say, they've had some, the Mother's Day tournament had somewhere around 31 baseball teams in it, people from all over. It was a busy weekend, college had graduation, a lot of stuff going on. It was a great, great weekend for Alba. Crew out there is doing a great job. Any questions for Mrs. Swallow? All right. There was not a cemetery meeting. Finance committee meeting for May 19th. Dr. Law?
It was a pretty routine meeting, nothing major was discussed. We've got two CDs coming up for bid, a total of $438,000. But outside of that, everything's trending positively, everybody's watching much spending as we roll towards the end of the year, so nothing major.
Any questions for Dr. Law? All right. Mayor's report. I just know it's a busy time of year for the community. Month of May is always busy, and this is no different. We've got some things coming up this summer, too. Different events here in the month of, they're coming up, end of May and first of June, so that's all. I don't really have anything else to report. Been trying to get a senior out of high school and got her done, so get back to life as we know it. Business manager's report.
Okay, so I attached my report to the, where are you listening, the agenda? So if there are any questions about the report that was sent out to you? Okay. Just some quick reminders, the new official institute, 16 October 2025 in Woodford. I need to know if you plan to attend. All newly elected council members have to attend that thing a year.
What, what day is that?
16 October.
Yep, okay. I got that right.
And I'll, wonder I get the full agenda with the meeting time? Usually starts about nine, but I'll send that out to whoever signs up to go. This is the closest one we ever had.
And I will say that if anybody else wants to attend and you haven't been in a while, it's a, it's a good refresher.
It is.
Of course.
John, I learned a lot last year, so maybe just two years ago, I don't remember. I've slept since then. I just want to remind everybody and get it on record that we have coordinates, 18-40, talks about grass clippings and that they are not supposed to be blown into the street. And I've been seeing a lot of that lately, so if you see it, report it, we'll, we'll come take care of it. But it's, it creates a hazard, especially for motorcyclists, so, and it makes us look kind of trashy, so just keep your, your grass clippings blown into your yard. The OML regional council meeting is 27 June at the Ranger Room. If any council members would like to go to that, let me know, and I'll get you guys registered. It's usually, it's a pretty good meeting, pretty informative with, what's his name? Mr. Fina from the executive director of OML. It's, it's good information, to be honest with you, so if you want to attend, let me know. Starts at 10:30. There will be lunch served. Dr. Hanford's going to come and welcome everybody to Northwestern and say a few words to start us off, so whether he knows it or not. Then the OML line of conference, 9 through 12 September. The 9th only implies if you plan on playing golf, but let me know if you want to go to that, so I can get hotel rooms reserved and get you registered for that. It's usually a good time, it's pretty educational, so let me know sooner than later, I'm going to get us, by the end of August to get the early bird special, so I'd rather not wait that late, because the hotel rooms will start filling up on us. And, I know Mr. Krakenburg is right here, but Mr. Ferris, I need a paragraph, paragraph and a half bio on you, and then the next council meeting, we'll take a picture so I can have the, the website. But just like I said, nothing too in-depth, just kind of, you know, what, a little bit about you, if you, if you can, so. And you feel free to email that to me.
Yes.
Appreciate it. That's all I've got.
You have that day on water lines?
So the updated water lines, the one on Murray is being buttoned up right now, and I'm still waiting to get updated on the one, or High Street. I haven't heard anything recently.
Now, was that just a line break, or was that part of the contract?
The contract hit it.
Okay.
And they shouldn't have. There was, it had been located, it had been hybrid back, you could see the pipe, and they said, so, yeah, it was, it's only a four inch pipe that's connected to the 12 inch line, and so we're getting the same flow volume as a 12 inch line out of a four inch pipe. That's part of the problem, so.
All right. And then we've got a line break hooked in as well.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
We may, with, with your blessing, add a new business to be able to authorize a business manager to take care of all these line breaks, if it goes over his spending limit.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll just go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I don't, when I say about this one, it's a mock, something for this one, and I want to help him, it should be, it's probably a good idea just in case.
Any questions for Mr. Ford? All right. Item seven, remarks and inquiries by citizens. If anybody would like to address the council, we'll ask you to please stand at the podium and introduce yourself, and we will give you two minutes to address the council. All right. We're glad you're all here. Item eight is a budget hearing for all interested citizens of the city of Alba as proposed for fiscal year 2526. So the budget, where is that?
Send it to touch it. I can pull it up.
Pull it up.
Maybe, if I could see.
Sadie, would you like to, high level, go over, or, actually, this is the public's opportunity to comment, if you have any questions regarding the budget or anything.
It's on the folders, Steve. It should be a Word document. Are you trying to pull up what we sent to the paper?
Yeah, that's where it is.
It's in the public hearing publications.
Right there.
It should be right there.
Yep.
Or in the PDF.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. I think it's bigger. So just to, kind of just a quick overview, general fund revenue will be $6,206,940. We'll bring in some money from the utility authority, $2,638,816. Transfer out to other areas, self-dedicated sales taxes, and, no, no, that's a different cost. And we'll have expenditures of $8,136,156, and that will be a zero budget, it's a balanced budget. Our special funds, airport is going to be at $710,180 revenue with $612,974 expenditures, and then I'll have a surplus at the end. Street and alley fund will have revenue of $487,500, spend $403,672, with their current surplus added to this surplus for next year of the $275,449. Donation fund, same thing, we're going to plan on $50,250 coming in to go on top of what we already have in the donation fund, planning to spend $41,000 out of that and have $41,600 available. The hotel motel fund, planning on bringing in $186,240, expending $245,350, or $330, one of the two.
$330, or $350.
Then they'll use $70,000 from previous year surplus. Capital improvement fund, we plan on moving $320,000 into that. Stabilization fund, we plan on moving $49,694 into that. Cemetery fund will have $37,854 in revenue, will transfer in $103,400, will transfer out $103,400, and will spend $95,249. The AUA, budgeted for $5,028,250 in revenue, expenditure, transfers out mostly to the general fund, or all that to the general fund.
Yeah.
Will be $2,292,500, and they'll spend $5,015,808. The economic development fund will have $4,440,700 and $2,557,79 expenditures. And the scholarship will have $634,613, with expenditures of $590,000, and then bringing $9,000 in surplus. And then the meter deposit, a little fund that has to be on our budget though, it'll be $2,000, in $2,000 out. Total budget, all areas of the city, $17,814,527. Transfers in, $3,111,910, transfers out, $2,765,594. Expenditures, $17,197,787, and previous surplus is $464,664. I do want to, if there's no, is there any, you may want to talk about the budget? All right. I do want to take the time to express my appreciation to the staff for their work in getting the budgets prepared, looking at their expenditures, and if it's a revenue department, what they look like they're going to bring in in revenue, and helping make sure the council have good information, be able to bring this budget forward. We will approve it in June, in accordance with state statute.
Yes.
Thank you all on that. Next item, NWOSU foundation presentation on the Alba incentive scholarship program for the 2025 spring semester. Dr. Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor Parker. It's good to be here with you tonight. Want to welcome the new members to city council. I want to thank each and every one of you in the community for the support, for the Alba incentive scholarship for Northwestern. Mayor Parker brought up graduation, we were very excited. We had about 40 more graduates this spring than we did last year. Estimated about 5,000 people at graduation, it was a great, a great turnout, great day of weather, cooperated, had a lot of businesses, restaurants reach out and say some great things that they were pretty busy that day. Also want to remind you, we, as we start summer school, we're also starting our camp season, and we will probably have, I don't know, 20, 20 to 30 camps this, this summer. Actually, we'll start this week, and probably close to 1,000 middle school and high school students will be at our campus and in our dorms and in the community all summer long. So we continue that commitment for our economic development for the, for the city. But before you, you have the invoice for the Alba incentive scholarship for the spring 2025 semester of $279,827.75. This was allocated to 290 students on the Alba campus, which we're, again, we were up slightly, I think about eight students compared to last spring that, that received that scholarship. So be happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions for Dr. Hanford? We will see the invoice when we get to the economic development authority meeting. You know, Alba's not Alba without Northwestern, and Northwest Oklahoma is not the same either. It's a huge economic driver for our community, and it was very visionary to have this tax put into place, that we're still using it so many years later, so thank you, Dr. Hanford.
Appreciate it, Park.
And we'll try to get you some money here in a little bit. Item 10, presentation from Granicus SmartGov municipal planning software. Mr. Ford?
So this is a, it's part of a, not necessarily just a cost savings effort, but a, an effort to modernize the way we do permitting and a number of other things. We've been stuck in a contract with Iworks for three or five years now, three, for three years, and it just, the best thing Iworks did for us was give us the ability to do the community engagement, where people could send in and say, I need my lips picked up at this address, you know what I mean? Other than that, Iworks didn't do a whole lot for us, that we made it to use it like we wanted to, or like we needed to. So we've been shopped around for, what, six, seven months? Heard a bunch of different presentations from a bunch of different companies that do very similar things, and SmartGov, while it's roughly the same cost as, as Iworks, we're not going to save a lot of money, I think we're going to gain a lot of efficiencies. We're going to be able to do permitting from cradle to grade online, so it's, to include even being able to pay for permits online, so they don't have to come down to city hall and just do it all from the comfort of their home, sipping coffee. And there's a few other features to it that I think Gene and Helen will probably talk to you about as well, but I've got Gene Nagy and Helen Wyco here on the, on the horn to kind of give us a quick 15, 20 minute presentation on, on SmartGov and what it can do for us and what we're looking at using it for here at the city of Alba. So, Gene, you guys still there?
We are here. Thank you, Steve.
Go ahead, it's all yours.
It is all ours, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to be mayor and city council to present to you this evening. We've gone through a diligent process, Steve and his team have, with the city to invent our solution, and we wanted to take just a few minutes to talk about that and share with you the value that it's going to bring to the city. So SmartGov is the name of our solution. It's a permitting, planning, code enforcement, and business licensing solution. Even though there's the little business licensing that the city will be using, they do have the ability to do that. Code enforcement is key, permitting, planning. Recurring inspections also falls under our business licensing and logic. It's a leading community development software, next slide. Helen, I'm going to let you go ahead and take it from here. By the way, my name is Gene Nagy, I'm the account executive, work with all the jurisdictions in the state of Oklahoma. From a community development standpoint, and Helen Wyco is joining me, she's our solutions consultant.
Yes, my name is Helen, and I'm the solutions consultant for the SmartGov product. I've been working with SmartGov for about 10 years now, works as a user, and one of the key components of SmartGov is to allow staff, as well as the council, like to make decisions based off of data. So being able to generate accurate reports, these are things that can be scheduled automatically in the system, so if you want to see how many permits are issued, or how long it's taking to process applications, as long as it's in the system, that's something that you can go ahead and report on. So we could do statistical reports, and then I think another popular thing with the system as well is having the visual piece, so you could see all the activity going on in your community. You could sort and filter this information, so if you want to see all the code enforcement of a certain type, or maybe you've got a lot of new residential permits coming into a specific area, that's something that you're going to have that insight. We also want to create a centralized database for staff for record keeping purposes. This can aid with records requests and, I'll say, protect the longevity of your records. With this SmartGov, we create a centralized database, so think of it like a digital file folder, and everything related to a property can be stored. So any sort of applications, those code cases, registrations, reoccurring inspections as well.
I'll make a couple of comments here, Helen, on this one, before I move on. One of the key things we see with a lot of jurisdictions is the ability to do more with less, if you, if you, if you will, and just be able to bring some efficiency back to the staff. They're constantly, you know, obviously have some phone traffic and foot traffic for different questions from applicants, residents, contractors, as well as just communicating internally, so that's to help remove those silos. AWS hosts our solution, and we take you all the security measures, and it's a cloud-based system, but it's real time, so you have three different environments, I'll let Helen speak to it a little bit more, but your back office, also the public portal, and a dedicated mobile app.
And our goal with the system is to create efficiencies for staff, as well as the applicant. And we've got over, we'll say, close to 400 partners across the United States now, and we've gained a lot of valuable feedback about the system, and that's, we see a lot of times, like at least a 90% user adoption rate to the public portal. So that's the venue where people can do things like apply for permits online, pay for fees online. We have worked with, along with Ford, extensively, who gave us some feedback that they've gained at least a half, half of a full-time employee within the first year of using the system, just because they were saving time, not having to manually wrap plans, we're automating routing for review, those reports, making it easier and clearer for the applicant to see what's required from their application, as well as the application process. Now, within the system, SmartGov can go ahead and route the plans for review, and this is where, this can be up here on email or user to-do list, really alerting staff and helping them prioritize what they need to do. We can also send email notifications as well, and then of course, there's statistics you can track in the system.
One of the nice things about that, before you leave that, Helen, is those are role-based dashboards, so task lists for the different responsibilities you have, and so Steve, you may just have limited visibility or wherever visibility you want within the system. Your chief, Miller's going to have his dashboard, Adam, Heather, those are your to-do lists, as Helen said, but they are all role-based, and you control that, the visibility on that.
Another key component is the, we have a dedicated mobile app. It's available on any Android or iOS device, and it makes information fully available for your staff in the field. So they could do enforcement cases, call up and do inspections. It works offline, so they can continue to do work if there's ever an area that doesn't have the best reception, or if there's ever a storm and you still want to be able to review and view information out of field, you can.
I'll take a moment to speak to this. One of the key things that your city business manager, Steve, and the team require is the ability to integrate with your Tyler Incode financial management software. We see that with a lot of jurisdictions throughout the country, and we are able to do that with just a simple couple of keystrokes, but what that basically does is whenever your general ledger or your county department or finance department reconciles that general ledger, they simply pull in an extract file that is generated automatically from SmartGov, that then automatically reconciles the general ledger with any kind of fees that are received through SmartGov and the associated general ledger codes. So it helps you reduce that ability, the, to make sure there aren't mistakes or input data in there, but you also have a full detailed listing of this account.
We had mentioned this previously, but there's a public portal piece to the system, so this is something that could be integrated into your existing website, and you want it to serve as that extension of your front counter. We can allow people to do things like pay online, apply for new applications, view their application status. You can also make information searchable through the public portal. Our goal is that the applicant or customer can see what's required of them, make it very easy to submit that information, and be able to bounce to the next thing that they need to do.
This was one of the key things, too, that Steve requested, if you want to go back to that slide, just real quick to Helen, was the ability, the way that currently it is set up with your current provider, Iwork, that you are able to report a case or a concern at the bottom of your website. So this will still take the same identical look and feel, it'll just be a lot more intuitive, and it's basically a hyperlink that's embedded in there that takes you straight to that landing page and a portal for SmartGov.
We also offer a shopping cart feature through the public portal, so if applicants want to pay for more than one application at a time, similar to if you want to purchase something online shopping, we want to make those 21st century services available to your citizen ring. We can also monitor and track contractors within the system, and we have a dynamic review process, so we want to help route those plans electronically for review, you could do markups, comments, but we really found that that helps streamline the review process and get a quicker response back from the applicant if you were to request revisions from any projects. You can also make these seminal documents available to the general public, so if they have questions about a project, instead of having to call into staff, it's something they can look up themselves.
Some of the stats from our partners, the reports that Helen gave you a couple of examples of earlier, you have over 150, they're quote-unquote standard reports that are within the system, but they are very detailed in nature. These are some of the highlight stats, we've got some feedback from our partners as well, like I read each bullet point, you can see those, all of those referring to just a greatly enhanced stability and expedited permit processing time and efficiencies gained. Next slide, some more industry stats, just of the value and the cost of an average face-to-face interaction versus telephone interaction versus online interaction, so helping reduce those costs to the city. Next slide. So we've got a series of about three or four slides here, and we're going to park another slide here in just a moment, but just some overall, SmartGov, again, we mentioned it's got three different environments, but it's just a really to eliminate those silos between different environments, but it's just really to eliminate those silos between different departments, make available 24/7. You often have some phone traffic, foot traffic, asking what's the status of an application or inspection, deficiency on it, what the status is, so that it gives the ability, so it's a really a win-win. We often hear strategic initiatives with cities to really improve the transparency with the residents. So this allows you to do that and they have a full knowledge of what the status is. Key things here, some differentiators, and a number of these, just about all these are some differentiators versus your current provider, also a majority of other providers. We happen to be biased, but we do know what's out there in the industry and in our space. We are really geared towards the small to medium-sized jurisdictions. So the city of Alva falls right within our wheelhouse in terms of what our target is. We understand the staffing and resourcing, there's unlimited data storage, unlimited users. You can use it on any kind of device, Apple or Android as far as your dedicated app, it's not a web app. And one of the key things that separates us from a lot of other different providers is it's a highly configurable solution. So it's a commercial, a little bit of jargon here, but commercial, off-the-shelf, software as a service, but with the ability to be highly configurable, so it's specific to the city of Alva's needs, your business rules, workflows, and use cases. Very intuitive and user-friendly platform. We often hear that from potential new partners, most new partners alike. A wide variety of credit card vendor options, not just proprietary, a lot of vendors out there right now are steering you to just one or two. We work with really just about any PCI compliant, it'll just about 30 we work with right now. Implementation process is very thorough, we're gonna show you a slide here in a minute that speaks to that. And that last bullet point I've already addressed, which was a key functionality that needed to be there to make this of value and to work for the city of Alva was an integration with Tyler Incode. Just spoke to that in terms of configured workflows, highly configurable, automatic updates for your parcel and GIS, true mobile app, Helen spoke to a minute ago, and unlimited data storage. And just kind of a keynote too, for files that you want to upload, it's up to 200 megabytes of, where you can do some commercial plan sites for that, that's a tree, that's like this pretty hefty file size, and that's unlimited as well. And again, just kind of a summary here, there's a number of other providers out there that kind of specialize in one thing or another, but in terms of community development or development services software, really kind of just kind of an add-on to that. So some of those especially on website, really have a lot of features and functionality, pretty basic in terms of what compared to what we're offering, same thing, some are specializing in just map offering, and some are just pretty basic and don't have a comprehensive implementation. I provided some of this specific to Steve, to others, that they were vetting, so they could do a side-by-side comparison. Helen, would you speak to the implementation timeline a little bit?
No, we take implementation very seriously here because we feel that that builds the foundation of the SmartGov solution and we want to get you set off on the right foot. So within the project implementation, we have what we call a business process analysis, where we take a look at your code, your internal processes, and specifically do all the heavy lifting to configure SmartGov. That goes through a period of user acceptance and training, you know, to make sure the reports are looking the way you want, that you're comfortable with how the applications are routing, that your inspectors are comfortable using the mobile app. And we also give you training on how to manipulate the system. So if you want to make a change, that's not something that we nickel-and-dime you for, you're able to go ahead and make that change in the system yourself. After go-live and, or after training and go-live, our implementation team hangs on for additional 30 days. We know that once you start using it, that you might need some additional changes that you weren't able to foresee, so we go ahead and hang on until your staff is completely comfortable using the system and there's a warm handoff to support. And we have support that's available as part of that subscription package. People can call, email, we've got a chat, but we want to make sure you're a long-term partner.
I always defer to Helen to let her speak to that because she lived and breathed, she was a permit technician for about seven years and the jurisdiction made a change a number of years ago, so I feel like it's better to hear from someone instead of me who actually lived and breathed in customer service. And we'll kind of make a final comment on implementation. We are fixed-price, fixed fee, which again is a key differentiator compared to most other providers that are time and material. So we, as Steve knows, are very diligent to make sure it's scoped accurately in the front end. And as Helen just mentioned, we're not going to nickel-and-dime, we could get some different things. This is unlimited workflows as well, so whatever it takes to be in place there for the city of Alva, specific to, we're gonna share best practices that help streamline that, but ultimately it's gonna come down to what you need for the city of Alva. And the final slide is just a kind of a wrap-up. Graniteus, if you're not familiar with the company, is solely focused on the government sector, so we specialize that in that, have a number of other products that are geared towards media meetings, you can speak to some of those as well Helen, so it might be something in the future need as well.
Yeah, there's opportunity to expand and grow with Graniteus as needed. Again, they're really focused on making sure that city services are accessible to the general public and being able to streamline efficiencies on the staff side. So there's some agenda, meeting management, public engagement, and delivery tools that are also part of our portfolio. But as somebody who's been on the permitting, licensing, and code side for a long time, I think it's a really fabulous product and we appreciate all the conversations that we've had with Alva staff during our due diligence.
Thank you Helen. Steve, Mayor's City Council, we appreciate the opportunity to share with you.
Thanks Gene. Does anybody have any questions for Gene or Helen while we're got them on the line?
Are we gonna be able to integrate this with the current app we have that's already downloaded on?
No, this will be a separate avenue. Mostly for, that's really mostly for like adding to, like to do things in the field.
Well, I could complain, like how they felt.
Now, that will, that will be the same.
Okay, so I was gonna say, I know we've been trying to get everyone to download this app, so that's not gonna change.
That'll be the same. It may look and feel a little different, but it'll still be, you click that link on our website, on the app, and it takes you to that other URL, put in your stuff, and then I give an email. So yeah, so it's not gonna change. Anybody else?
Adam, I'm kind of putting you on the spot, so if you don't have it handy, I mean, just get back to us when you know, but you were involved when we went into, Brian also, when we went with iWorks. Maybe we, do we know more now as we're making, I mean, is this a decision that you think that the council needs to make to help you guys out? Is it, we know more now than we knew then when we took on that program?
Yeah, most definitely, because when iWorks was first brought up, I mean, I was pretty new still, so it looked like it would be beneficial, but we were kind of deceived a little bit on that. We were told that it would integrate with Incode and it doesn't. And so basically just double worked, you know, everybody over here in the south end and myself too, so it was just, wasn't feasible to even use. But this right here, they, for like all of our codes and ordinances, they upload all that themselves. We don't have to do any of that. I know iWorks you had to, you had to pick basically what orders you want to drag it into the system, and it was pretty time-consuming. So this one here, they'll upload everything that we need, so it is going to be very beneficial to have that.
It takes a streamline of allowing permitting to go through an app or a part portal, which takes it off the office staff in the south end, that we can track and look and in the field and every property, then anything that happens to that property is now logged. Everything we do now is old-school, paper and file, and you gotta come into the office and do it. It really is getting us into the 21st century, it's taking a lot of the paper storage away, the planning of construction plans, we don't have to keep those rolls anymore, this all gets uploaded in there, plan review will go a whole lot quicker, we'll have commentary notes that we're able to do on it. If we move into a plan review software, which is Bluebeam that we talked about, it'll integrate with this system and it's so much easier. But through like planning commission and board of adjustments, everything's attached to a parcel, no matter who owns it throughout the whole line of it. So like when he's doing complaints, some yard complaints, and we want to know how much and how many people and how often, is it a, habitually every year? We can go in there and just look at that parcel and bring it up to the whole council and say, hey, every year he has six violations, or he or she, it doesn't matter. Now we gotta go back and we gotta, you know, we're building a spreadsheet to try to track all this stuff. And all that stuff goes away and it's more streamlined, we're not working through three different softwares to do everything. And the redundancy in the south end and the business office, that's, that's the biggest thing. We're taking everything down, we're keeping it focused in the one system that integrates with us. It also works to where we can make sure that Adam's out there doing his job, doing his due diligence, how many permits, how many complaints, where he's at, and all that information's to you guys at your fingertips. So that's, that's the good thing that I see about it.
How many other options did you guys kind of consider and what did you like about this more than those?
We looked at probably three or four different ones.
So we went, we went through, and I'll speak on this, the reason why SmartGov works for us because it integrates with Tyler Technologies, which is our Incode system. Every other system was similar in nature, but it doesn't go with our books. So any of those systems, we would still have that redundancy of doubling the work, because we still gotta make those payments into Incode so we can do our books and everything comes in as revenue on it. This now streamlines it into, so when they batch out, that revenue's already in Incode. Now we're not having to do a permit down here and do a permit over there in this system to get a permit out and then you have to come in and do it. It's gonna be better for people that want to invest in the community and do building construction and go into our website and actually see what our processes are. Or if they're just looking to do a project, they can go in there and they can see what the permit, that's kind of like that card, shopping cart that she was talking about. They can go in there, here's what our permitting fees are. And now we're gonna be able to come back to the council and a lot of the permitting fees that we don't do, that we just bypass and overlook that's not in there, we can actually get it into ordinance and upload it all in there and get everything under one system.
Gene?
Yes, sir.
What does the agreement look like in terms of the length of the agreement, the initial term?
This was a prorated for the first two months, so that you can start it sooner rather than later, so this is assuming a signed agreement this week. And then we did a, I don't know if you want me to pull it up, but we did a five-year agreement, so it's a renewable every year. What that does, it locks in a very negligible, just uplifted, I think we added a 3% a year over year.
Yeah, that's right.
That it was going through.
That's right.
So it locks, so it locks it in, and that is a really the best value to go by to approach for jurisdictions that we've worked with. But it does include our full, so we have an enterprise solution which includes all our modules, and includes a merchant connector which allows the residents and contractors, applicants to pay their permit fees online, and includes what we call the SmartGov financial connector, which is for the Tyler Incode financial management software.
I had a question for you. Will your software, could it pull like a monthly report of how many violations were given and where they were given to, we could have on our, just to have an idea of what's being done on that? Can you pull that, like a report for the council members from the software?
Absolutely, I'm gonna let Helen speak to that, because again, she's delivered and used to have automated generated reports to key stakeholders.
Yeah, so that's something that can be scheduled in the system, it's part of our generic report offering. And then if you guys elect to, you can also make that report available through the public portal where you can enter your own search criteria. So if you want to look at the last month, if you want to like the last year, that's something that you can allow people to fill in themselves.
But you do control the visibility, so that's based upon whatever you want the public to see or others to see, which you get anything based, it's captured in SmartGov, you can report.
And it really helps with the transparency within the public, because right now, as you enter in a complaint within the public, it automatically sends you an email states that, hey, we received your complaint, it's been shot to the fire marshal and the code official for review, or the water department, or whoever the complaint goes to, and then it gives you updates on the status, is what we have right now. If we run those analytics to where the public can see it, they can go in and search and go, how many times have I turned in this property, what, where are they at in the process? And then that transparency's a whole lot more than what we have right now. It's just kind of like an automatic email that comes back to you and then we can put in there, hey, it's been taken care of, completed. This will actually allow them to see where the processes are at within their complaints. So that's one good thing that this company offers.
How often are the codes updated or checked for consistency with what we have on our book?
So we follow the OUCC, which is Oklahoma Bureau of Code Commission, which is through state Oklahoma, and all cities go through, they follow that as the codes revise every three years, whether they adopt them or not, we follow whatever the state adopts. So like right now, we're in 2018, we're gonna accept the 2021, and we'll be changing to the 2025 when they adopt it. So it's every three years if the state looks and that fits what we want to look. Sometimes it's not enough change to change, so we stay in the previous year, but we just follow what the state does so we can run comparable to them.
We can deviate from that if we choose?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it's all based by ordinance, and just how our ordinance runs right now, instead of bringing that every three years to the council, we, we put this back in early 2000s, 2002, when the ordinance changed that we would follow the state, because that was a recommendation by OML at that time, that every city kind of followed that. There is some cities that build their own codes and go above the code, but this is the minimum code requirements that you have to meet by section. That's kind of why we did that.
Well, thank you, Gene and Helen, and thank you to Adam, Brian, Heather, Steve, whoever else had, you know, work involved in looking through all this. I would suspect this is not an action item on this agenda.
It's all working on my spending.
It's under your spending, okay. And it's budgeted, clearly, because we have the same amount of money for iWorks. All right, any other questions from the council? Well, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time. Thank you, take care.
All right, we'll talk to you soon.
Bye.
Bye. All right, next item is discussion and action to approve Park Hill Amendment 12 to authorize design-only for construct hangars. So with the FAA funding, and I think that's probably the next item, yeah, with the FAA's, so looking at 11 and 12, kind of just a high level altogether. The FAA grant that we have and the funding that we bank through our various grants through the state and FAA are not adequate to start breaking ground and doing projects. We're going to have to do the design stuff anyway, and so we can go ahead and knock out the design portion now with the funding that's gonna be available through this FAA grant that's in the agenda, along with continuing to bank some funds that we get from the FAA. The airport, basically, we, we're able to do a lot of projects with help from FAA and then in recent years, the Oklahoma Department of Aeronautics has been chipping in quite a bit more as well. But basically, this allows us to keep moving our projects forward even though we're not going to be funding-ready to break ground during this next grant cycle. So it just keeps moving all that forward. So my, my recommendation would be that to entertain a motion to approve Park Hill Amendment Number 12. Are there any questions on that? Any questions on that?
Does order on this make any difference? That we need to approve the grant application and then that?
No, because if we don't approve the grant, they're not going to do the work.
I move to approve Park Hill Amendment Number 12, authorized for design-only for construction of hangers, as stated in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Adair, and a second from Mr. Hoffman, to approve Park Hill Amendment 12, as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Adair?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
All right, 9 and 12 is discussion and action on a recommendation to submit an FAA grant application for grant AIP 3-40-0003-021-2025 for a FAA grant in amount of $105,450 with a required city match of $5,550 to fund design-only for construction of hangers, and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all necessary documents and accept the grant from the FAA and carry out the project.
Our motion to approve Item 12 is stated in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Lar, a second from Mr. Adair, to approve. Item Number 12 is stated in the agenda.
Is there any further discussion?
Please call a vote.
Lar?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Item 13 is discussion and action to appoint the City of Alba City Council President. This has been held by Mr. Bowman. Despite his absence, he's willing to continue in that capacity, but we do this every couple of years when we get new council members, so I'd entertain a motion or discussion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Greg Bowman, the City of Alba City Council President.
Second.
Is it Lar? I have a motion from Mr. Parsons, a second from Dr. Lar, to appoint Greg Bowman, the City of Alba City Council President. Any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
All right, we'll have council members leave, council clerks stay, and then we'll start with Chief Miller and the firefighter union contract.
Business. In light of the water line issues that we've experienced today, I would, and we've done this in the past, it's possible, depending on what they find when they get into them, that the cost to repair or contract to have repairs done may exceed the manager's spending limit. So this clearly came up after our agenda was posted, and I would entertain a motion to authorize the business manager to exceed his spending limits for the repairs that need done on the lines that broke today.
I'll motion to allow the business manager to exceed his spending limits on the lines that were broken today.
Second.
All right, I got a motion from Dr. Lar, a second from Mr. Hoffman, to authorize the business manager to exceed his spending limit for water line repairs that occurred today. Any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Lar?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yep.
Swallow?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
All right. Remarks and inquiries by council members. One thing I didn't mention, guys, and I wanted to make sure you guys knew, that our city economics person, Roger Godwin, his house burned down a couple of days ago. And so if anybody's interested, there is a Facebook post, and there's a way to make contributions or send prayers and stuff like that if you guys are interested. I can, if you can't find it, let me know. I'll send you the link for that. Nobody was hurt. The house was pretty much total loss, but everybody was safe.
As I was going to say, I mentioned this in my report, but everybody's got it right there. If you have questions, reach out, reach out to me. See, I figured somehow, I'll reach out to Roger's team, I won't reach out to him, but there's other folks that work with him that I can reach out to if there are questions about what's in here.
Okay, no other remarks and inquiries. City council meeting is adjourned, and we will open the regular meeting of the Albe utility authority. Please call a roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lar?
Here.
Swallow?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Adair?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion and action on consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved at AUA meetings, will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 21, 2025, and Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $491,229.33, and payroll expenses of $19,722.28. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hoffman, a second by Dr. Lar, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Item 5 is discussion and action to approve NWSU 2025 spring semester Albe incentive scholarship expenditures in the amount of $279,082.75. Is there a motion to approve?
I would move that we approve the NWSU 2025 spring semester Albe incentive scholarship expenditure in the amount of $279,082.75.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Adair, a second from Mr. Hoffman, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Lar?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Item 5 is discussion and action to approve NWSU 2025 spring semester Albe incentive scholarship expenditures in the amount of $279,082.75. Is there a motion to approve?
I would move that we approve the NWSU 2025 spring semester Albe incentive scholarship expenditure in the amount of $279,082.75.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Adair, a second from Mr. Hoffman, to approve the NWSU 2025 spring semester scholarship in the amount of $279,082.75. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Lar?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Item Number 4, no new business either. Utility authority is adjourned. Now we'll call order the regular Albe Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call a roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lar?
Here.
Rethenberg? Swallow?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved at AUA meetings, will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 21, 2025, and Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $491,229.33, and payroll expenses of $19,722.28. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hoffman, a second by Dr. Lar, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.